This turn right there like gravel road. It wasn't even a road. Not this, the best stuff.
The microphone's on and we've started recording.
And do you know something?
Excuse me?
Do you know of the parking across from the Hyatt office that you usually use? Is that available to those people on water drive?
The last I heard, it's uncertain whether Hyatt owns that property or not. It's at one point they were talking about paving it. So right now my assistant said we're suggest, yeah, maybe.
Okay.
If you're gonna guess.
Parking on that street is terrible.
Okay, it's six o'clock so we're gonna get started. Speeding is an order. We're having a public hearing, uh, meeting. On November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. They call this speed order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Terry, would you even call the roll? Mr. Childers?
Here.
Mr. Dumas here. Mr. House?
Here.
Mr. Ralph?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
All present. Thank you. Uh, I declare quorum. And welcome to the public. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments regarding conditional use applications. Being considered by the city planning commission for approving, uh, short-term rentals. We want to open the, for public hearing now?
We could, I think we should go through the rules.
Go through rules first.
Okay.
Uh, the public hearing will be conducted in a fair and orderly manner. Do it to allow citizen opinion. Citizen opinions to be expressed directly to the planning commission that is making zoning policies decisions. Individuals wishing to speak shall approach the podium, state their full name and address and make their comments. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments. If multiple individuals have made similar comments on the same item, then the chairman may limit, pardon me, limit further similar repeating comments. Individuals who submit documents at the hearing shall identify each document. Each document submitted shall be made a part of the official record of the hearing. Documents submitted prior to the public hearing will be provided to the commissioners and be made part of the official record of the hearing. Reading documents into the record are subject to the three-minute time limit, three-minute time limit also. After all comments have been made, the chairman will close the hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, further public comment on this topic will not be entertained. If a planning commission meeting follows immediately after the closing of the public hearing to deliberate on the hearing comments and to consider further action on this topic. No public comments will be accepted on this topic during the meeting. Commissioners may discuss an item and ask questions of the presenters from the public hearing. Okay, we're gonna open for public, uh, comments. Anybody like to comment? They are forever.
Just ask the question for each one.
Okay. The first is eight Bluewater Circle. Thirty-one Rappahoe Drive. Seventy-four Beaver Drive. Sixty-five number two, Bluewater Drive. Are we allowed to comment or?
Yes. Well, no, ideally it's not the public side.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Sixty-five number three, Bluewater Drive. Sixty-five number four, Bluewater Drive. Sixty-four Lakeside Drive. Five Larkspur Lane. Five Letigo Lane. Forty-nine number B Leatherwood Drive. Five Narrows Drive. One Oak Point Lane. Seventy-nine Saturn Drive. Thirty-five Cable Rock Drive. Six Wedgewood Lane. Twelve Wedgewood, Wedgewood Lane. One White Oak Avenue. And lastly, forty-three number eight Woodsdale Drive. No comments, sir.
Yes.
What about six country culture? Was that included?
Do we have an application for that one?
That one, I, I think I got the application this week.
Okay, yeah.
That'll be December twelfth.
Okay.
We'll have the hearing for that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, then we will close the public hearing comments in the public hearing. Will be adjourned?
Yep.
Or do we need to take a motion?
It's, so you're under control of them.
It will be adjourned.
Alright.
We will move on to the regular, all the, all the city planning commission meeting.
They make it easy.
It makes the fifty-eight hours of preparation worth it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If we had money, we, we would.
That's okay.
I hope you pay him one. Double themselves.
We're thinking about it.
Alright, we will, uh, we'll call this meeting to order and, uh, do, dispense with the pledge of allegiance we've done. Uh, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Childers?
Here.
Commissioner Dumas here. Mr. House?
Here.
Mr. Ralph?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
All present.
Alright, declare quorum. Welcome to all the public attendees. The purpose for this.
We need to approve an agenda.
Okay.
You got the wrong one. Public hearing. There you go. Okay. Before you approve them into, uh, before you move, approve the agenda, I have an amendment that I'd like to add.
Okay.
For one, I'd like to discuss the application for short-term, short-term rental. It's the checklist I wanna talk about. And number two, I want to affirm, uh, the zoning map recommendations and I'll be going through that in our description. Reason we need to do that is, uh, we need to make some changes and that'll be city council action. And it needs to come as a recommendation from the planning commission typically. So those are two, my, my two additions.
Everyone in agreement to amend the agenda?
Can I share House? I make a motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
A second. Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright. So we've approved the agenda.
Yes.
Approved the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes for October ten for the public hearing in the regular meeting.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Ralph has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reports. Any reports? Standing committees, special committees. Business, old business, new business, new business. The new business is deliberations on public hearing comments regarding conditional use applications.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the following resolutions. H, uh, C P C R twenty-three dash oh one three through H P C. R twenty-three dash oh thirty-nine, reading only the title for each resolution.
And I'll say, so moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Point of order, we need to, um, have an opportunity to discuss.
Yes.
Ideally, uh, we should read each one.
Yes.
But she made the motion that, uh, it's read by. I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
So, resolution R twenty-three dash thirteen is a resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at eight Bluewater Circle for use of short-term rental. R twenty-three fourteen, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at thirty-one Rappahoe Drive for use as a short-term rental. R twenty-three dash fifteen, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at seventy-four, actually seventy-nine Blue, or Beaver, no, excuse me, that's right. Seventy-nine, seventy-four?
Seventy-nine.
Yeah, seventy-nine Beaver Drive.
That's a different one.
Alright, seventy-nine Beaver Drive. Resolution twenty-three day sixteen, approving conditional use permit for residents at sixty-five number two Bluewater Drive. Resolutions twenty-three day seventeen, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at sixty-five number three Bluewater Drive. Resolution one, R twenty-three dash eighteen, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at sixty-five number four Bluewater Drive. R twenty-three dash nineteen, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at sixty-four Lakeside Drive. Conditional. Resolution R twenty-three dash twenty, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at five Larkspur Lane. Resolution R twenty-three dash twenty-one, approving conditional use permit at, for residents at five Letigo Lane. R twenty-three dash twenty-two, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at forty-nine B Leatherwood Drive. R twenty-three dash twenty-three, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at five Narrows Drive. R twenty-three dash twenty-four, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at one Oak Point Lane. R twenty-three dash twenty-five, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at seventy-nine Saturn Drive. R twenty-three dash twenty-six, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at thirty-five Cable Rock Drive. Resolution R twenty-three dash twenty-seven, approving conditional use permit for residents at six Wedgewood Lane. R twenty-three dash twenty-eight, resolution approving condition use permit for residents at twelve Wedgewood Lane. R twenty-three dash twenty-nine, resolution approving conditional use permit for residents at one White Oak Avenue. R twenty-three dash thirty, resolution approving the traditional use permit for residents at forty-three number eight Woodsdale Drive. Okay, now you asked for.
Do we have any public comments?
No, it'd be, it'd be our, it's definitely amongst us. If we have questions of the public, we can ask.
Okay.
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 Uh, any further discussion for the committee?
I just had some notes and things that I discovered in all the preparation that, uh, there's some addresses and some issues with zoning that I believe need to be changed or modified. So I wanted to show you that. Motion approved. Here we go. Okay. The very first one is for an upcoming, I just wanted to make, make you aware of it. Uh, there's a seventy-three Pine Lane application that we won't concern either in the future. The county records show that it's eleven Pine Lane. We have it in our zoning map table at seven Pine Lane. And the addressing for that is right here and it shows on the, uh, the records, eleven Pine Lane. So it's a recommendation that I'll have to make for, uh, the city council to consider. But for tonight, we have an application, uh.
So then do we go by the county records then at that point?
I, yeah, I believe it's an error on our part that we, the table is an error. All these, I believe that we have errors on our table that need to be fixed. Okay, because it, it matches the, the property, unit one, block three, uh, block thirty, or sixty-six. Match of that description. In, uh, application dash nine, uh, the address, its address forty-nine A and B are assigned. County records, three A is assigned to the forty-nine B location and three B is assigned to forty-nine A. They're exactly opposite of that in our, in our record, so they need to be split. It's a minor change that won't change anything, but it's something we need to change. Also, in dash seventeen, uh, it is zoned in our records, A C three. In the C three records, uh, it's a stand-alone on this Woodsdale Drive. It likely should be a C one. So it's the description that when I read the, the zoning, the, yeah, the zoning use that's in the covenant, it matched to C one and so for whatever reason I keyed C three into the document. So I think it's a switch, even though it's zone C three, I think tonight we can approve it because I anticipated being changed.
What is C three?
Uh, C three is, uh, is commercial, but it's the kind of commercial we have outdoor displays like a, a, uh, a car lot or a, um, an agricultural sales. You have plows and tractors in the front yard, fill up a lot, that kind of thing. So it just wouldn't fit that property. It's not that kind of a zone. And the city approved, uh, short-term rentals to C ones at their last meeting, so C one is probably appropriate reading. It's commercial in the, in the decoration reservations. Just I picked the wrong one. I was in our table.
So the committee, the, uh, city has approved short-term rentals to C one?
Yes.
Okay. That clears several problems, okay?
Okay. And then at some point in the application dash three, uh, this address sixty-five Bluewater Drive, that lot was subdivided. And this text says that was subdivider is a replat of this original drawing in book number one twelve on pages two forty-seven through two fifty-six. And in our table, we don't have any addresses assigned, but that's resolved from these applications tonight. We find that we can use the ones that are on those tables that tell us that, uh, for the first one, that it's, uh, does this one show it? Hmm, that's the owner. Anyway, here he is. It's number three is what should be applied to, uh, one of the lots is sixty-five number three. And then the next one down in the list is the same situation, but it's the lot that's at number four, Bluewater Drive. And then the next one's a lot that's named at, uh, those three of them. I skipped past it. They gave, it's a simple names. The, uh, application dash one, it's identified as U V L one twenty, fifteen and sixteen, or just sixteen, depending what the document you're looking at. The thirty-one Rappahoe, which is, is a, signed to lot sixteen in the county record. It appears this home has been built on two lots, the lots fifteen and sixteen. And they've assigned the address in their record to lot sixteen. So down here, they say it's assigned to fifteen and sixteen. So in our record, we need to eliminate twenty-nine Rappahoe Drive and fix this one to be sure that it's assigned to the right property. Okay. And in dash two, uh, the block should be G. The records, everything that's, uh, in the, uh, warranty deed and what have you talks about this block being block G. We have it in ours as a block O two. Excuse me. Read that dress. Why don't I have a copy? There we go. Slid over to part. We have it called block two. And in the records and the warranty deeds and the public record, the, that's from county, that should be called G. So it'll be a change in that record. Not significant, but it's important to get it right. That's the changes that I discovered in, in all the preparation for this and since, things need to be changed in the city's records. Okay?
But that affects what we're doing tonight.
The only one that, that concerns me a bit is the one that's on C three in the records that we're going to approve. That they're not, C, C three does not permit short-term rental, but I believe it's a clerical error that will be resolved. So I recommend that we apply and approve it.
And if it's not, then we can, can we approve it on a contingency that we will resolve that through a BOZA meeting or something like that?
I thought the action that we take is if we approve it and the city council tells me, you know, you can't change it to C one, then we're gonna have to take the permit away. Invoked it.
I don't understand why the C would. I don't either. From a C three to a C one.
That's why I thought we'd take this approach.
Do you need us to, to make a motion to acknowledge that these are errors that need to be corrected?
Well, that's why I put on the agenda so we could talk about it formally and simply, uh, make that recommendation like a, it doesn't have to be a motion, but you know, we're, we should advise the city that their records are wrong and need to be changed.
I agree.
With the eight million clerical details that you did, building all of this to find five errors, I'm shocked.
We're just getting started.
It's not very far into it yet.
That's what I started to say. It scares me. We're not very far. I found this many problems with our own records. But if we get them right, we'll get them right, you know, this.
Yeah, but look at the huge amount of data that it says.
But are you, are you recommending that the city approve short-term rentals in all C threes or just this one?
Oh, just, just this instant.
This one is, right, okay. I feel good about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not, there may not be any other C threes that come up. I would didn't, you know, I don't know which ones are rented, so I can't do that investigation and.
Right. I understand. We'll just, we'll just take them as they come.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So there's the point of asking for your further comments because these are the things that I found.
Any further comments? I don't think they have, they affect the end.
And, uh, that's, uh, what you want to do, motion, uh, we have a motion.
It's been made and seconded, uh. Let's, let's vote on it. Call roll.
Right. Childers?
Yes.
Dumas?
Aye.
House?
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion has been voted on, carried and passed and, uh, these will receive their short-term rental permits.
We have lots of documents to sign.
We do, let's see.
What, you're hearing that Stanford?
No. Your Stanford might work for the things you need to sign. I'm, I'm okay with that. I think you used, well, I did use on the applications, but it'll be fine. So it's further, uh, as far as the last item on the agenda. I handed out a copy of the, uh, conditioning application. I don't have one prepared to bring it up on the screen.
Oh, you're covered this one. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, as I've been going through this, um, I remember when I created it, this document was a copy of the condition use application that was generic for all times.
On the screen?
Yeah, I don't.
Very good. Okay, okay.
Um. I could bring one up. Never mind. I can bring one up. So public, let's look in the briefs. If there's even an application that someone has applied. Here we go. This is start, okay. Um, you know, filling out the application, I think is absolutely important. The fee needs to be paid. Uh, the warranty deed proves to us that the person or the property being asked to be, uh, conditionally used is the, it belongs to the property owner, so that's good. And the verification documents, uh, I think we need to expand that a little bit. Uh, we need to make certain that the solid waste bill indicates in number four that it, the property is being taken care of. And what I've started to run into is, well, I've got a, a cleaning company that takes care of it for me. You know, okay, he showed me a bill and they send me the bill and the bill talks about a cleaning company and the fee, fee that they pay. But there's no relationship to the actual property. So I need to improve or enhance that section.
And your statement, at, at the time of the application, they should show a receipt from Carroll County Solid Waste.
Well, if they have someone else do it for them, they aren't gonna get that. So they're probably gonna have to talk to their provider to add a statement to the copy of that, something that shows that this property is covered by this contract, if you will, with Carroll County.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be more difficult. I found it to be difficult than the ones I got this week. Um, I think the narrative is fine. I don't think photographs of the property is of any real benefit. These are residences, um, you can see a picture of it on the county record that, that's part of my intent to prepare, prepare for the, um, for the brief. So it's gonna show the property actually exists. If, if there's something wrong with the property, like it's a, a fallen down property, needs a lot of work. Hopefully it'll be a complaint. Um, I know I drove around each one to verify that the signs were placed in a timely manner. So that's the time I would discover. Maybe there's condition problems with this property and we should do something about it and not approving it. Okay, so I don't think photographs is real benefit, you know, only because, um, the applicant has to go through and find pictures if they aren't resident to take pictures. Um, I just, I think we could strike number six.
Sure.
And for that, uh, also the site plan, uh, that was left on there as part of, uh, what I copied from because it would be like, uh, someone's asking for a conditional use where they wanna place a garage. And there's issues about setbacks and, and easements and that kind of thing. But in this case, a set, a site plan is a little relevant. So I'd like to strike that from the application as well in the future.
Well, it's in it on data scan also.
Uh, data scan will show a floor plan, but doesn't show how it sits on the property. Site plan is where it is on the property.
It really isn't relevant.
Yeah, it'd be, that would be wrong on our part to insist on a site plan if they don't have one to pay a, a surveyor to get one. But it's not gonna change the fact that they're applying for a short-term rental.
Right.
So I recommend we take that off. So going through this process with, with the, our recommendations, I'll take this to the mayor in the procedures, regulations, etc. It's the, a document approved by the mayor. So I'll make sure it's okay with him. I'll remove that for the future applicants.
We don't need to vote on that.
No, as long as we just have an affirmation that it's okay. Okay, that's all I have for my amendments.
I drove around the properties also and I didn't see anything that stuck out that said we shouldn't approve these, uh, you know, it's obviously they have, we have the ordinances and the regulations that, that, uh, they have to meet, like the trash and the parking and the number of people here. There was nothing that stuck out that.
Well, I, I, I invented some of these just by going through Zillow, you know, seeing where they were. And I don't wanna put anybody in and, you know, but a picture of what they're wanting approved and it would be nice to be able to match it with Zillow if we have to, you know, on all of these.
Okay. So you're in favor of leaving it?
Yeah, I kinda like to leave it. I, I don't wanna put a burden on them, but you know, um, at least one outside shot.
Well, they, they get their pictures off Zillow. Huh? They, they can, they can get theirs. Like they're not on Google Earth or Google Earth.
Right, yeah. They'll incorporate that sometime.
Take a picture of it. They can pick up one off the internet. So, but I, 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 I grew, uh, I grew up by most all these and seeing them versus these pictures on Zillow or something else.
Well, there, there's some of them, yeah, and I didn't look.
Well, what I see, pictures on Zillow can often be two, three, four, five years old.
Well, that, that's true.
Where drive by it, it's live right now.
Yeah.
And, and from the time the picture was taken to what we see now, those conditions could have changed drastically.
Right, but there was one or two on here that was like a set all by itself and the driveway had a big parking, you know, it just dead-ended on their property basically, you know? So there was no reason to drive by.
Right.
You know, that's, cause half of my view, half of them I could tell by looking at the, that there was no houses around them and, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
So consensus is a photograph lease?
Now, let's just, let's delete it. And there, let's, let's just delete it. There's a problem we got later.
Okay.
Or put photographs of available or something like, I get out.
Okay. We can make it optional. I can make it, we can make it optional if available, if readily available, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, we wouldn't have eighteen of each.
Yeah, I know.
I actually agree.
Mark it on your calendar on June fifteenth. You know, the, the, the last one before the, because July would be a deadline.
Oh, the year deadline?
Yeah, well, the deadline, the, the ordinance says the penalties will begin July first. So by the June meeting, will be a hundred and sixty of them on the list. Be my guess. I've got, uh, I have two and one pending for December. I need some information for this. Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that the council has put the regulations in place that these applicants are agreeing to follow. Make this comfortable that, you know, these are they're regu- good regulations for the community.
Thought we had done. Thought we had done.
Can I ask you a question of the, uh, audience?
Sure.
Are the Plumleys here? You're the Plumleys, okay, okay. Okay, I'm, I'm just curious, your name shows up on the list several times, pardon me?
Why often?
Yeah, we all know those. You, you own, pardon these, I didn't know if you were managing these for other folks or?
We also manage the ones that are not under.
Ah.
Like, uh, seven on Saturn?
Okay.
We, uh, not.
I was just curious, I did.
Four vehicles, we managed that one, one of the flames, we managed that.
Okay.
We collect trash, take it to the doctor right over here, that's why you're gonna have a hard time really. Carroll County can buy the trash. Do that property, because we get the, we get the city, the most properties that are under our management.
I didn't mean to call you out, I just, I just.
We just noticed your name came up multiple times on there.
I've seen you before, but we hit you really bad, thank you very much.
Clarification, the applicant is the property owner, not the renter and not the representative, the property owner.
Right.
Has to, has to get.
That's what I'm about, so, yeah.
So when you see their name, it's because they own the property. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
And I was just gonna say, I think that might for the photo, like the ones that are on Airbnb or Furbho, they should have a photo. Listen on that, that's another way you can verify.
I, I've come to the point of, uh, oh, I can help you get that to, you know, you need to provide it.
There are only eighty-four pages you sent, slash one.
One of the comments I read too was that if someone's gonna. Rent their place short-term and advertise it on VBR or whatever, it's gonna be enhanced, it's gonna look nice.
Yeah.
They're not gonna try and rent something online that looks really bad.
You're right.
They won't rent very many, because our lively, who's handle, how well that looks.
Sure.
Yeah, and I mean, if it looks like trash.
They're not gonna rent it.
Alright. So.
We actually have one on dog.
Yeah, we actually had one.
Okay, so in the last, where are we at? Uh, we're at the, uh, we're at this official commissioner comments. Here's your meeting, and, uh, yeah, there's books. That's from the public hearing, it's buried, there you go. Alright, so we're right, yes, we're right here.
Are we at the public comments?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, just answer this one. Deliberations on public hearing comments regarding conditional use applications, uh, with public comments, three minute time limit. Uh, do we have any comments, or have we had this? Okay, okay, then we'll go on to commissioner comments, any more commissioner comments? And, uh. Do I have a motion to approve?
As far as scheduling?
Scheduling.
You're making your, uh, notes. And this is scheduling, scheduling is number ten.
Okay.
Uh.
Oh, there, you're right.
December the twelfth.
Okay, uh, the next one we'll add will be December twelve at six P M, because we have, uh. Two applications to consider, so we'll have a regular meeting following that. December twelfth.
And you know it's two now, they're, well, they're being, possibly being added between now and.
Just one that's pending, if I can get some critical information before ten o'clock tomorrow, because I gotta get in the newspaper. And that's the message, when I get home, if they haven't called me back, I'm gonna leave them another message that. It's ten A M tomorrow, because I have something else in between then and noon. It'll give me fifteen minutes to get the newspaper. Otherwise, we won't be considering it in December.
Okay. I thought it scheduled, okay, okay. So we've done that, a special meeting?
I don't think we need one.
Don't need one, do we need a workshop?
Not yet.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, before you, uh, during, I didn't have any comments specifically about the, uh. Uh, permit you're considering tonight, but I would like to make one general comment, like a. Do I have to get up on the phone?
Yeah, what's your name? Who are you? Go ahead.
And I am speaking, you know, uh, as the mayor. Uh, I'm just asking that, uh, when these conditional use permits are issued. That you stress to the people. That they need to be aware of the city ordinances. It's their responsibility as a property owner to know what the ordinances are. So that they are, uh, sure to be in compliance. Uh, because it's their conditional use permit that's at risk. If the, if issues continue to come up, I'm not necessarily anticipating any, there have been some issues with track. And, um, and I would also say that, uh, as a property owner. Um. Depending on management company. To do it, to, to know the ordinances and do it right is no defense. You as the property owner are responsible for the actions of your management company. And any subcontractors they may, relative to. Conforming to the requirements, so, you know, if. If, you know, the, the garbage cans are sitting out at the end of the drive at seven o'clock on Monday morning. Sitting there waiting for it to be picked up at, uh, you know, seven o'clock on Thursday morning. That is a violation of our city ordinance. If the trash cans are sitting there at. Ten o'clock yet, um, uh, Friday morning. That is a violation of our city ordinance. Uh, trash has been, it's not been a huge problem, but it has been a, a little bit of a problem. And it, you know, the, we make calls and the response is, oh, I pay so-and-so to do that. Um, you know, I'll make sure that he, you know, gets on board. And then, you know, two weeks later, oh, I told him and I thought that, you know. He was doing it right, and I'll call him again, and, uh, you know, we just. You know, we've only had one or two so far, but if we end up with a hundred and fifty properties.
Yeah.
And we have these nagging little problems all the time, because the person that's really doing the booking. And everything else, well, maybe the property owner lives in Oklahoma, the guy that's doing the bookings is in Arizona. You know, and the guy that's doing the maintenance is in Eureka Springs or Berryville. And, you know, who's, you know, who's responsible? The property owner, because they're the ones that have their conditional use permit at risk.
Well, and it's, it's not just trash.
No.
It's, it's the noise ordinances that you put in place, there are all of those.
Right.
Do we have, I mean, I see you sign an acknowledgement. But do they get a copy of those pertinent ordinances when they apply? Because I think that would be helpful.
Well, yeah, maybe, maybe that, but do we have on the permit? That is subject to all the city ordinances that can be found in, so you have to website.
Statement is on the.
Yeah, so if that's.
I just, I just think it needs to be reinforced and, and stressed, because. You know, it.
Well, you're absolutely right.
Property owner that's at risk, and, and they need to. They need to know what the requirements are, and.
And we're basically approving them based on the fact that they're gonna follow those ordinances that are so important to the community, so, yeah.
I don't think it's gonna be an issue with, with people that are local.
Yeah.
But so many of these are, you know, the property owners are on the west coast or who knows where.
Right.
And.
But don't you expect that now that we've gone to the conditional use permits? That whatever we've had to pass, don't you think this is a step toward betterment?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because they've, they've now got some skin in the game, they've got a hundred and fifty bucks, whatever that is, you know?
I, I'm just saying that.
Permit, yep.
If all the people involved. Um. Gain an understanding of our ordinances one phone call at a time. Made by our code enforcement officer. It's not gonna work, I mean, we just don't have. The staff or the time to do that.
Well, I think then at the time of application. Who's ever making that application should say that, or be given a copy.
That they understand.
Posted in the unit in a conspicuous place along with the permit.
Yeah, that, that is.
It's not, I mean, there's only, there's only three or four ordinances that really.
Yeah.
Right, applies, so, I mean, it's, it's not a big deal to go in, but go online and read them.
Mr. Plumley. I want to show you what, what we have is, in the resolutions, is additionally recommended placed. And it's recommended place an appropriate label binder, a copy of the city. Noise ordinance requirements, a copy of the city parking requirements, and a notice. To all those, uh, maybe cited and finer violations of the applicable city ordinances, on the city website. Well, one step further, in the application and the permit itself, it says that they will comply with the city. Uh, codes and regulations and the, uh, applicant and not transferable. On the city website. Get there, here we go, on the city planning commission page, on the documents and forms page, that's this one. Right above or below wherever you have it. The short-term rental, conditionally used application, that'll fire up and it'll bring up those three pages. The short-term rental documents, the binder documents are right here.
Oh, okay.
And that one big document of whatever pages, there's a Q R code, they'll take them to all city ordinances. There's a Q R code that takes them to the planning zoning regulations, if they wanna read the entire thing. And there's a section in there about parking that's, that I've copied out, that's important. And, uh, below the parking is the, uh. Property maintenance regulations for the nuisance and abatement, there's a Q R code, they'll bring them to this ordinance, or the document is there. So short of doing it for them, I've created the Q R code so they can get it on their phone and read it. Here's the document, they can print and put it in a binder, so we're giving them what they need to have.
Yeah.
Then we get the renter to read it and apply, and that's the second step.
A little coaching in that direction before you sign the permit would be, uh.
The renters will read. Send it with everything up, and they don't read it.
Yeah.
They get directions. We can't get inside the building. When you get you in the direction, yeah, right above the direction, there's the code, they get inside the building. We personally put it above the.
In red.
In red.
But then last, eight pages are the solid waste ordinance. So it's there, Mr. Mayor, I've done what I can.
All we can do.
With the tension span, which people these days, they, if it's, if it's more than a hundred and fifty words, they're just not gonna read it.
Well, as, as the Airbnb renter, I, I would go in and think, isn't that a lovely binder they put together?
White brooch.
You walk in, you look, sit there to guess book to sign, you know? Those things, well, all we can do is try, and, uh.
Do what we do.
Well, hope if we get ninety-nine percent complaint, gotta be happy, there's gonna be a hundred percent that's always gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's.
There's always gonna be one percent that doesn't, you know?
Yeah.
That'll get worse.
I move that we adjourn.
Second the motion?
Moved to seconded, but here, you wanna call roll, or you just say, I. I, I, go, get out of here, immediately adjourn, immediately. I hope everybody got what they wanted.